It is now 6:00 PM and I call this meeting to order of the Florisville City Council, regular meeting for February the 10th, 2022. Please rise for our invocation. We will follow up with a pledge of allegiance in Texas. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today that you may be with us during this meeting. Have your direction above us, direct us and guide us, and show us what you would have us to do for the best of the city of Florisville. Thank you for all those that are attending and may your safety be upon them. We pray this in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the lead, Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
We do have a forum for tonight's meeting. All members of the Florisville City Council are in attendance. Thank you for being here. And at this moment, I will open the floor for any citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for anyone who would like to address the council. I ask that you come up to the podium, introduce yourself. We give you five minutes to state anything that you would like to tell us. We cannot respond to it at that time, but we will take everything into consideration. So I open the floor to any citizens' comments.
Mayor, my name is Andy Dawson and I come to you as a citizen tonight. I'll sit in the city manager's seat there. I wanted to just recognize who are my council members, Mayor Pro Tem, Kanku, who recently had a birthday, and this evening, Ms. Gloria Martinez. We forced her to be here at this council meeting and we're leaving her, but today is her birthday too. So round of applause for the mayor.
That shows dedication.
Any other citizens' comments? If you would introduce yourself.
Sure.
My name is Mike Sullivan. I just had a comment about zoning and switching and zoning, R1s or R2s and whatever. And I was wondering what the council's position on that is. Since we moved here, we only moved here about six or seven years ago, we are not clear why there are so many exceptions made to the zoning rules and how they're accomplished. So I'd like to get some feedback from the council on what it takes to go from R1 to R2 and when variance is agreed and what the criteria is.
May I have a?
Unfortunately, Mayor, I don't believe that you can respond on citizens' comments, but I offer the gentleman in the audience that he can call me at any time. I'll give him my information quickly and then we can have a sit down with Lyle, our inspector, and follow the rules that we need to. I know he deserves the information and we will make sure that we get that.
That's what I'm suggesting. Thank you.
Right.
Any other citizens' comments? Okay, if not, we're going to move on to old business. Item 1A, consideration action to approve the meeting minutes for the regular council meeting on December 9th of 2021. Counsel, you have before you in your packet that those minutes. Give you a moment and then I will entertain a motion. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve that.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I second Mayor.
Seconded by Mrs. Martinez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to item 1B, consideration action to approve meeting minutes for the regular council meeting on January the 13th of '22. Again, counsel, you have before you the minutes and I'll give you a moment and when you're ready, I will entertain a motion.
I think that we approved the minutes for January the 13th.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Martinez. Do I have a second?
Madam Martinez, I have to confirm.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. JP Menes, she was, were you late at the beginning or did you lose at the end?
At the end.
At the end?
Yeah.
Because I saw that, but I think she was here at the beginning.
I was.
Because you were up, it shows that you're absent on the minutes.
For that particular item, this is the meeting that we kind of went back and forth on different items and so made it confusing to a lot of people. So some of the items that when we lost their signal, that's why it's kind of out of order.
Okay.
It does show her present for the meeting. She was part of the quorum. She was just not, she was not present for some agenda items to vote on. And as the mayor did say, that she did, the agenda didn't go in order. She kind of moved around to different items. But if you want me to go back and listen to the recording, I was not present for that meeting, so I would have to listen to the recording again just to confirm.
Yeah, because there was.
Mrs. Amin, to my understanding, she participated. Is it? It is.
Yes.
If you'd like to approve with corrections, we'll make the amendment in Florida.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes with those corrections. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you for my two minutes. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, thank you. Okay, I'm going to kind of move a few things around. I'm going to move on to item 2F, consideration action to authorize the city manager to take appropriate action on the American Rescue Plan Act, of which we covered last night in our meeting.
Mayor, if you may allow me, and I know I try to tend to speak too much, but the newspaper is here tonight. On January 27th, 2022, I attended a Texas City Manager Association meeting, training in Austin, Texas, where I received the latest update on how we can allocate the American Rescue Plan money. I returned and informed the finance director as well as our financial advisor, who was here last night. In your package, you will find the state and local fiscal recovery fund overview of the final rule, and this is the final rule. There's been some changes as we go, but they came up with the final rule on page nine, the section replacing lost public sector revenue. Our financial advisor was informed of this. I read a piece of it. Replacing lost public sector revenue, the state and local fiscal recovery funds provide needed fiscal relief for recipients that have experienced revenue loss due to the onset of a COVID-19 public health emergency. Specifically, funding may be used to pay for government services in an amount equal to the revenue loss experienced by the recipient due to COVID-19 public health emergency. Government services generally include any service traditionally provided by the government, including construction of roads and other infrastructure for the reason of public safety, other services, health and educational services. Funds spent under government services are subject to a true amount of reporting and compliance requirements. In order to use the funds under government services, recipients should first determine revenue loss. They may then spend up to the amount on general government services. We requested that the council approve determined revenue loss. The first portion recipient may elect standard allowance of $10 million to spend on government services through the period of the performance. We received approximately $1.9 million. This is well under the $10 million. If you give us the standard allowance, this will go into the general fund to help cure the problems that we've had in the future as far as the deficit. The financial advisor stated this is the utmost direction that we can go. In one year, as partners, yourself and I, we will be able to correct the deficiencies in the budget, take care of the deficit, and then move the city forward. We are doing an excellent job and I'd like to commend our financial director in regards to, let me see where I left it. We just received an award for the reporting that she's done. The last time that this was bestowed on the city was in?
2018.
In 2018. She had to compile stacks and stacks of financials for the city. It was turned into the agency that gives this award out.
The comptroller.
The comptroller's award. And I wish I had it in front of me to receive that. So we are in the right direction as far as the council manager team to move forward on what we've done. You have told the public that we will correct the issues that existed way before you sat on this chair and you've done that. So I want to make sure that we move forward in regards to that. I found it finally. The data analysis and transparency division of the comptroller's office is completed. It's annual review of the transparency information posted on the city's website. In support of the city of Florisville, traditional finances transparency star, we have verified that the financial transparency information continues to meet the criteria for this prestigious recognition. Your transparency star award remains valid and will continue to be listed on the comptroller's office. And I've got a copy here, Texas Comptroller Public Council, where's the city of Florisville, the traditional finance star for exemplary efforts in creating financial transparency around the public services and spending decisions. The transparency star program recognizes local governments across Texas that are striving to meet high standards of financial transparency online. These efforts provide the citizens with clear, consistent information about public spending in user-friendly formats. So if you would move forward and approve what the staff strongly recommends, then this is a big step in solidifying that you are doing what you told the public and that's been stewards of our funding and improving our standing. We've got a standard and port rating next Wednesday where we're going to present what you've done and we'd like to have this approved so that we can also let them know that this has happened.
Thank you.
That was a lot heard. I thought a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Any comments before I will open the floor for a motion? Okay, if not, I will entertain a, I'll open the floor.
Oh, thanks, Philps.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve.
Okay, it's coming back. You want to wait just a minute because you got to wait for the system to turn back on?
As folks on one side broke something, huh? Let them, we can give a round of applause to our finance director.
I was going to say, I was at Philps all day today, so I'm going to go out to.
Tell him what happened, Sis.
Thank you for that. Well, we just had a little interruption. Okay, I will entertain a motion. I believe I had a motion on the floor by Mrs. Canty.
Madam Mayor, I move to work with the city manager to take appropriate action on the American Rescue Plan Act.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Martinez. Any citizens' comments? If none, all those in favor, please raise your right.
Mayor, before you take a vote, can we specify if we want Mr. Dawson to deposit those medicines to the general fund?
Yes.
That motion.
The motion, the Rescue Plan Act and to deposit the money into the general fund.
Thank you, ma'am.
And that would be $1.9 million.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So do we need a second on that again, ma'am?
Yes, we'll go ahead and do that.
A second.
Okay, any citizens' comments? If none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. I have this five to zero. Thank you so much.
The finance department and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 2A, consideration. Mayor, before you continue on that.
Item 2A, at the request of the developer and the attorneys for that item, they had asked the item be tabled for this agenda and they will notify the city when they are ready to proceed.
Okay, and that would be 1A?
2A.
2A.
2A. So can I, I will entertain a motion to table item 2A.
I make a motion to table this item, 2A.
Okay, I have a motion.
Consideration on the FUD. I have a motion on the, on the floor. Do I have a second?
I second.
Segmented by Ms. Jimenez. Any citizens' comments? If none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 2B, consideration action to consider the approval of the subdivision replat establishing NOVAC subdivision, Wilson County, Texas plat of 0.75 acres of land out of the Oroca grant in the city of Florisville, Texas, and also being portions of lots number five and six in block number 34 according to the, according to a map of said city of Florisville of record in book C, page 76 of the deed records of the Wilson County, Texas. I will turn this over to Mr. Lyle.
Thank you. This was presented to P&amp;Z and they approved it. It's a division of some property that's right here on C and 7. And they've done everything they were supposed to. We collected fees for the services and I recommend that they be approved.
And this is only to subdivide the property?
Only to subdivide the property.
Nothing else at this point?
Nothing else at this point.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
And we vote on this because the application does specify that there will be a double Y there.
Correct.
So you're saying that we're not voting on that?
You're not voting on the double Y. You're voting on the actions, subdivision of the property.
Okay. Well, with that said, Madam Mayor, I move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to approve item 2B. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Segmented by Mrs. Martinez. Any citizens' comments?
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Was it Jade?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, too. Segmented by JP Menes. Any citizens' comments? If none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item passes five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to item 2C, consideration action to consider the approval of the subdivision plat establishing DLS subdivision plat of 8.68 acres in the land of the city of Florisville out of the SNH Oroca grant abstract number one, Wilson County, Texas, and being the land described in a conveyance to David L. Stroger and Sandra L. Stroger in the deed of record volume 1025, page 684 of the official public records of Wilson County, Texas. This plat contains a total of four lots consisting of a total of 8.68 acres of land in the city of Florisville. Also, Lyle?
Also, this was presented in planning and zoning and they passed it. This property is right in front of the, I guess it's the Florisville Junior High on B Street, is what they call it. And he's dividing it up to where he has acre size lots that he's going to sell to builders.
Okay. Any questions, counsel?
Yes, I have a question, Madam.
Yes, ma'am.
Lyle, you mean on the side, not in the front, right?
On the side.
Okay, on the side. And then to somewhere I read, I can't find it because I didn't put a sticky on it. It's going to be divided into four and then part of that is a flood.
It's a natural flow of water, yes.
So all the, all the lots are how big?
I don't know exactly. By looking at this, like 1.5 to 2 acres, 2.89, like three acre tracts and two, two three acre tracts. And then you have a two acre tract and a one acre tract.
Okay, that's why, because I saw that it was cut in the back, so I was just like, but I, I figured out. But anyway, that's why I was asking the question. Thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions for Lyle? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the subdivision plat on the DSL subdivision.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Canty. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Segmented by Ms. Marissa Jimenez. Any citizens' comments? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D, consideration action to approve a facility usage agreement between the city of Florisville and the Florisville Walldax. We have Mr. Pettis here. I know we spoke and met last night in a workshop on this item.
Yes, so we are here to approve their contract for the 2022 season. And you have the walk head. President here and the secretary. Oh, sure, sorry.
And we discussed items with, I'll go over, I mean, I'll let our city attorney go over those.
That is correct. Mayor and council, I think the two issues that were still open for discussion was the length of term and the amount that was going to be charged. In regards to the water meter, what I have proposed and that I have put in our agreement is as follows. City shall install a water meter at the applicable site and city employees shall be responsible for the watering of the fields and to monitor the water usage. Okay, so that's good.
Okay.
And other than that, I think the only two issues were the length and then the amount. And I think Mr. Pettis was suggesting $3,200?
Yes, that was proposed yesterday in the workshop, the $3,200. So ultimately.
I thought that's what we had agreed on, the $3,200 and then the two years.
Two years.
And then the split on down.
And then the water, well, we'll see what that comes out to and then we'll have a better idea. Yeah, probably after years.
And then the 2,000, 2,500 on the bottom, on the door, or was it the split for the?
Yes.
So originally, it was the 2,500. If they did the jamboree, we split the gate fee. But we were given the 3,200 flat rate fee. We're going to let them keep that because we split the paint. So we're going to let them keep that. So we would use it to, so the cost with the paint, we're going to have to strike the field with.
Okay, you're going to let them keep on.
This is, this is what I have in the proposed agreement. Walldax referred to in our agreement as FWYFL. Shall pay to the city the amount of $3,200 during the term of this agreement, with the exception that if the FWYFL hosts a jamboree tournament, then in settlement, they shall split the gate fee profit and the event shall be at a cost of $2,500 payable from Walldax to the city of Florisville.
Yeah, that was the original one when we talked about last night, was taking that out and just doing the flat rate of the 3,200. So we're going, they're going to keep the whole. Last year, we split the gate costs and then it just went back to the paint. So they're, they're willing to pay the 3,200, so we take the full maintenance of the paint and the cost of the paint. So it's paying that 3,200.
No 2,500 for the jamboree?
No, ma'am.
Because 3,200, right, the term of this agreement?
Yes, because they came up with 700 fees for the cost. Do you remember the total cost when we split that gate? Was it 700?
Yeah.
It was about, that was the 700 split cost. So 700 for Walldax and 700 for the city of Florisville. And that went back to the paint that we, we spent to strike the fields. So it was agreed that they paid the 3,200 and the city would take on the paint costs.
Is there some questions? Mrs. Martinez, did you have a question?
Yes. What about, I don't know, I recall talking about splitting the gate last night. So that would not happen?
Yes.
They would take the whole gate?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So it would take, okay, we wouldn't split the gate, we wouldn't charge them for water the first year, is that correct? And we'll go ahead and put a water meter out there, plus no jamboree?
Fees, no spreading of the jamboree fees.
And the city would take care of doing the fields, cutting the grass?
And striking.
And striking.
Yes, ma'am.
So they wouldn't have any expense as far as buying paint or anything. Is that correct, Ches?
Yes, not for the paint. We would take the cost for the paint. Yes.
And we would pay the whole lot for each one.
Yeah, well, that's what I wanted to be explained to as far as what we're, we charging you for and what we were not charging you for, to make it clear.
Okay. Any other questions or comments by counsel?
I think Ms. Canty and then.
Yes, I have questions.
Okay.
For the president or whoever.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to know on this, because we didn't have this profit and loss, and I wanted to know, what does a stadium rental mean?
The stadium rental.
For $5,210?
That, that was our.
Can we discuss that financially in this particular item?
No, I think what's at issue right now is just the agreement, what on there is with Mayor Pro Tem, is the agreement and the amount and the terms that are in the agreement.
Yes, that would be another agenda, a different agenda.
We don't control them.
We don't, we just.
And I know where Mayor Pro Tem is coming from because I think in another organization, we actually get to review and audit their documentation, their finances and stuff of that nature. And unfortunately, well, that's up to you guys because y'all are the boss. However, we don't have that documentation in this agreement. And I think that now we have to discuss, you guys, if y'all want to change the agreement to add that for the next time around, we can do that. I can do that if you guys want me to do that. And if not, then we're limited right now to the agreement and with the terms that we discussed last night at the workshop.
Okay.
But it's up to y'all. Like I said, if y'all want me to add that, I can add it on the bottom of the table and stuff of that nature.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have a question regarding if, if we could add something in there in regards to whether we, or if the city was not to meet a certain obligation and then they had to pay for something. I know that in the past, we've kind of just, I think it's just been really good faith between them and us, like, hey, you, you guys got this, so we're going to let y'all go with this. But I think there should probably be like, say if, like, we don't have the employees or something and they end up having to strike the field again?
Well, we basically have in here, counsel, one under 3.1. It indicates as follows. Upon the mutual consent of the parties, this agreement may be modified upon mutual agreement of the parties in case an emergency occurs. Renegotiation of the terms of this agreement shall occur at the end of the term of this agreement, provided the city's city council allocate sufficient funds to maintain the facility, or unless the terms have been modified by agreement of the parties herein. So that's basically a saving grace statement right there, that you can modify it in case of an emergency such as COVID and they lose players and stuff of that nature, or something happens to the finances of the city. So that's a saving grace actually for both parties.
So if, if something was to happen like that and they end up having to do something, that means that they would be eligible to come back and renegotiate?
Yes, sir.
And also, if, I mean, I think Andy, Mr. Andy Dawson here, city manager, if we are short-staffed coming into next year, we have employees that would be able to, you can send out and help us out there as well. So he's did a great job about that of catching us up there. If we are short-staffed, I don't see me having a problem with that. We can be able to reach out to the city manager on bringing some of our, our guys in other departments to handle that situation.
So once again, Mayor and counsel, what we do have is basically still, we need an answer on the term depending on.
Final comment. Again, I know I mentioned this yesterday in the workshop, Ches and Andy and Ms. Rodriguez and everybody, Ms. Canty, all of you, right? I respect the heck out of you guys and it's your job to save us money. So you're going to hate me every time I try and give stuff away. I understand that. I expect that. Thank you for that. But again, these are kids. So I know that for me, and I know everybody's not going to agree on it, I'd like to stay at 2,500 and the two-year contract. And I want to do a test for those two years to see how much water is used, because one year could be a wet year, one year could be a dry year. And where there was no other issue on that, right? Anything else to sort out yesterday? So just for those two things, I want to stay with the two-year contract and 2,500. The jamboree was something that we discussed yesterday. We didn't talk about that. I know. And I want to do a test for those two years to see how much water is used, because one year could be a wet year, one year could be a dry year. And where there was no other issue on that, right? Anything else was sorted out yesterday. So just for those two things, I want to stay with the two-year contract and 2,500. The jamboree was something that we discussed yesterday. We didn't talk about that. I know that, I, I don't want it to look bad on you, because your books, in the end, are going to look like you made less money, but that, you can put that on me. You can say, hey, that was his fault. Because, I mean, at the end of the day, it's $700.
Okay, any other comments by counsel before I open the floor for a motion? If none, I will open the floor for a motion on item D, item two B.
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to go with the amount that was agreed on and recommended by our staff of 3,200 for a two-year term, with the edits of adding the water meter, but not charging until we can get some good data on the usage.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Jimenez. Do I have a second?
I second that, mayor.
I have a second by Mrs. Martinez. Any citizens' comments? If none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those closed? Item passes three to two. Thank you.
No, I don't, I would abstain, because there's a lot of questions that I, that I didn't get answered. I mean, I just have about 10 questions that I need to answer. I mean, we're talking about 130, 41,000.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and a vote of three, one, and one.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, and we all have a wonderful season.
Thank you. We really appreciate it. Our... One, two, three, and a two, so you can press?
Thank you all for being here.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday to you, too.
Oh, my goodness. February the 10th is a great month.
Moving on to item E.
Good luck. Thank you, mayor.
Moving on to item B, consideration action to approve the disbursement of hotel motel tax funds to the Eastern Star Organization. Mr. Pettis?
Yes, I believe, hopefully you can see anybody here from the Eastern Star. They did fill out the application. So the Eastern Star has been coming to us for years. So they do bring our heads to bed. So they had some data, I believe it's on the application they put on there. They spent two days, they actually moved it, so they're here Friday and Saturday night here. So they're two days here. They do bring people from all over town, and they do meet their requirements for the hotel motel tax. So we did that application. They already had their event, so they're just requesting the funds after.
I've been a part of a couple of their events, and they are absolutely fantastic. And they do travel from all over the state to come to Florida, and they love the event center.
Definitely, yeah. They, they choose our event center sometimes twice a year since Ms. Martinez has been there. They've been coming here. So they've been coming here quite a while. They love the center, and they, they want to continue to bring their meetings here.
So is it, Madam Mayor, can you explain that a little bit more, Chad? What they do there?
So Eastern Star, I'm not really too, too familiar, but they have their, it's the retired teachers, and they meet there to do their, they have a breakfast, a lunch, and a dinner. So they meet there, they congregate, and then they break into sessions just to help give back to the teachers. I believe, I'm not really too, too sure on everything they do.
Yeah, it's a, for a term of, of the Eastern Star, and they have, they emphasize history and culture of various, and they work on this all year long. It's incredible. I would hope that the council gets to visit whenever they come back.
Definitely. They change their days. They used to leave Saturday by noon, now they're here all day Saturday. So they're, they're moving it longer, and they're keeping people here in town longer as well.
Yes. I know I don't have a vote on this item, but I would, how much are they looking for? Or what's the...
I believe it was 1,200.
It's for the amount of the holiday.
The home portion contribution.
Madam Mayor, I've been to those, I just wanted Chad to explain it a little bit more. And I move to approve the disbursement of hotel motel tax funds to the Eastern Star Organization in the amount of 1,200.
I, do we have it on the paperwork?
Well, he does, on paperwork, it does state that it is for the amount of the rental, but you're stating that it's for the two past events, correct?
No, it is for the one.
Just for one.
He just did the one. He said he wants to come back to do the second one.
Okay, so then it will just be the 1,200 dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I have a... I'm sorry?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do we have to have like a budget for that, Cindy?
We'll have to come back and do a budget of it on hotel motel tax. I did look, there is money in the reserve for that, so we'll be okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, you can give me just a minute, mayor. I want to confirm that it is just the one date he is seeking.
Yes, because they have a future date coming up with us again, but it's an October date. So they do request these hotel funds to help with their organization.
Chad, and you said it was Friday and Saturday? Wouldn't that be two days? Or it would just...
It's two days, yes. But they're a nonprofit organization, so we give them our nonprofit discount rates.
Okay. Mrs. Martinez had a...
I have a question. Thank you, mayor. Chad, was this presented to the visitor insurance bureau?
We do not have a board anymore. Our board is, is all we have, no members did come to these meetings anymore, so our advisory board is, we don't have them right now.
Is that something that we need to put back in place, since we are open and we're booking events like this?
Yes, if we're going to have these applications, I believe so, for the advisory board. If not, they're going to come straight to counsel.
Okay. And then I just, I just ask because I know, you know, the board looks through everything and hash it out with you, and then you can come, you and the chair come make the recommendation.
Yes, ma'am.
So maybe that might be something we put on the next agenda.
Right.
It is just the one.
Just the one for 1,200 dollars. So the motion would be to approve the disbursement of hotel motel tax funds to the Eastern Star Organization in the amount of 1,200 dollars. Is that correct, Mrs. Cantu?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I, did I have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Segmented by Mr. Villarreal. Any citizens' comments? If none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item passes five to zero?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then moving on to item G, consideration action to appoint members to the 4A Corporation to fill vacancies. Mr. Johnson?
We've had, several of the council members have attended individually to the last couple of board meetings, and we have not had a form. We had one individual, two individuals who resigned, so we've got two positions that we need filled to be able to function. It's held us up on a couple of minor things at this point in time, but we'd like to have those vacancies filled. And I know our city secretary posted that ahead of time and had some applications.
You have two positions?
That is correct. There are two open positions.
Two positions, okay. Any questions, counsel?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I do want to recommend Mr. Roy Idrak. When Mr. Gleason brought this issue to my attention, I don't even know what it was, but coincidentally, I ran into the speaker, and he said he was more than happy. And I wasn't sure how much interest we were getting, but I noticed that we have three applicants, so I want to go ahead and just step ahead of the game here and say that I would like to give him his seat back on the fore, seeing as how he left when he was ill, and he's now recovered. And then I don't have a...
I'm going to second that.
Oh, well, I'll make a motion.
Okay, we'll do them one at a time. Correct. So I'll take, is that a motion, Mr. Villarreal?
Ah, yes. Do I need to rephrase that?
Yes, please.
Okay. I want to make a motion to appoint Mr. Roy Idrak to the 4A board.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any citizens' comments? If none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Item passes five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Roy.
Thank you. Go to your...
We have one other position to fill. I will open the floor for nomination.
Mayor, I'm going to make the motion to appoint Mr. Ryan Lurker.